Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, September 16th, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our Sign Language Interpreter, Robin Schmidlin. The following is a list of legislation up for preliminary approval by Pittsburgh City Council. Finance and Law Committee, Mr. Lavelle's Chair, we have new papers. We have Bill Number 677. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Ceci Portuguese in the amount of $105,000 relating to the full and final settlement of an eminent domain case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 678. Resolution authorizing eight open-end professional services agreements with multiple vendors to provide professional services for construction management and construction inspection on an on-call basis as required related to the assessment, design, construction, and maintenance of the city's infrastructure, buildings, and lands as needed by the various departments of the city of Pittsburgh. Each agreement being an amount not to exceed $2,500,000 annually for a two-year term with up to two additional one-year options and providing for the payment of the cost thereof. Bill Number 679. Resolution authorizing nine open-ended services agreements with multiple vendors to provide professional services for construction management and construction inspection on an on-call basis as required related to the assessment, design, construction, and maintenance of the city's infrastructure, buildings, and lands as needed by various departments of the city of Pittsburgh. Each agreement being at an amount not to exceed $750,000 annually for a two-year term with up to two additional one-year options and providing for funding of the costs thereof. Bill Number 680. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with the University of Pittsburgh's Small Business Development Center for training of consultation with and promotion of a curriculum aimed at developing skills for small business owners who do not yet do business with the city of Pittsburgh as part of the city's required deliverables for our living city's grant. Cost not to exceed $30,000. Public Safety Services Committee, Mr. O'Connor is the Chair. We have deferred papers. We have Bill Number 647. Ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title I Administrative, Article III. Organization, Chapter 116. Department of Public Safety to regulate the use of facial recognition and predictive policing technology. And this piece of legislation is sponsored by Councilmember Corey O'Connor. Public Works Committee, Mr. Calhoun is the Chair. We have deferred papers. We have Bill Number 632. Resolution amending Resolution 744 of 1996 entitled "The Resolution Authorizing and Directing the City Controller to Create a Special Trust Fund to be Designated as the Shade Tree Trust Fund for the deposit of cash and contributions and authorize the use of the funds deposited therein by the Department of Public Works for any and all expenses associated with the operation and implementation of projects related to the planting and promotion of trees in the city of Pittsburgh." Human Resources Committee, Mr. Kraus is the Chair. We have new papers. We have Bill Number 675. Resolution providing for the filing of applications by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Human Services for grants in connection with the Joint Jobs Initiative Program Employment Advancement and Retention Network and providing for the authorization to enter into agreements with various agencies and to pay for expenditures, cost to support, implement, and administer the program. Cost not to exceed $3,828,594. Land Use and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Wilson is the Chair. We have new papers. We have Bill Number 682. Resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Hanauer Rosenberg House located at 417 Lockhart Street in Deutstown in the 23rd Ward, City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 683. Resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain site known as the Spring Hill School located at 1351 Damned Street in Spring Hill, 24th Ward. Bill Number 684. Resolution approving a new institutional master plan under the Pittsburgh Code, Title IX, Zoning, Article II, Chapter 905, Section 905.03d, and Article VII, Chapter 922, Section 922.12g for Allegheny General Hospital Institutional Master Plan dated August 17th, 2020 on property zone EMI, Educational Medical Institution District, 8th Ward, Council District Number 7. Innovation Performance and Asset Management Committee, Ms. Strasburger is the Chair. We have deferred papers. We have Bill Number 661. Resolution amending Resolution 738 of 2019 which provided for a professional services agreement with NCR Corporation to provide citywide credit, debit, and e-check payment services for the collection of various programs and permitting fees for the city of Pittsburgh by exercising the option to extend the term of the agreement for one year at no additional cost and updating the name of the vendor. Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, Ms. Gross is the Chair. We have deferred papers. We have Bill Number 634. Resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for proposed land development located at 316 South Halend Avenue, Pittsburgh 15206. We have new papers, Bill Number 681. Resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for North Negley Residences at 327 North Negley Avenue. And Bill Number 689. Resolution amending Resolution Number 768 of 2019 authorizing a cooperation agreement between the city of Pittsburgh and the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to divert 75% of the incremental parking taxes from the garage, up to a maximum of $10 million to find, to fund affordable housing at the proposed city's edge development in the uptown neighborhood in the city of Pittsburgh by adding language that would also allow for the funding of infrastructure, public space improvements, and a combined 508-space parking structure on-site as well as reducing the amount of proposed affordable housing units from 77 to 63. And this bill is sponsored by Councilman Daniel Lavelle. That concludes the reading of legislation up for preliminary approval. Thank you and have a great day.
Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee Agenda for Standing Committee, excuse me, meeting for Wednesday, September 16th, 2020. Council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays at 10:00 a.m. until further notice. Our meetings will be livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel. Our first order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council and profanity will not be permitted. When we announce the speaker, please just let us know your neighborhood, your name and the neighborhood. We'll begin. Our first speaker is Mr. William Parker. Is, I don't see him. Is Mr. William Parker with us?
I'm available. It took a while to get off of mute. Thank you. Hopefully you all can hear me. My title is Ikahana Halmaquina. Reverend Inka of the Airpa Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. It is our mission and our goal to empower the Aboriginal and Indigenous American people through various acts and deeds that are meaningful to our people while at the same time always giving and honoring and respecting others as it is our nature. Whereas we are here to seek justice and equality in our homeland to which we were born. As set forth in the great writings of Frederick Douglass, specifically "The Folly of Colonization," written in 1894. Whereas the quality of life is essential to us in all life, our air, our water, our land, the soil that sustains us, allows us to grow food. We here are seeking the assistance and the collaboration with the city of Pittsburgh via the concerted efforts of city councils to honor the many treaties on our land. You agreed upon these things in order to be here to do your business. So for millennia, we've honored and protected our sacred lands and we wish to continue to do so without being encumbered upon, without being subjected to statute codes and policies that are for your business. We are here to remind you of your duty and we will continue to show up at city council. We urge you to put in legislation to make sure that our rights are honored and our values and our culture remains intact because I will remind you all that this is the Aboriginal Indigenous land that you are standing on today, that you meet and discuss every week about our land and access to our land. So it is time that there is a shift and change to include us in the conversation in all regards to our native land, to our indigenous Aboriginal American land. And with that, I yield.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. William Parker. Mr. Parker?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, let me start my video. Okay, I'm on. All right, so I just wrote down, I'm commenting today because I care about the safety of the people in our communities and because I'm in the tech space and I've been on the front line advocating for more diversity, inclusion, and investments in people of color in tech here in Pittsburgh. It's my understanding that Mr. Connor wants a facial recognition technologies to first be approved by city council before implementation. I'm in agreement with that as long as Mr., as Mr. Connor stated, people are getting arrested based on this technology that's not perfect. So my suggestion is let's make this tech better. Let's raise funding through a racial equity initiative and invest in a black-led tech company to create the software that's more efficient and non-discriminatory. At the end of the day, we still need some sort of surveillance to deter violence and police the police. And we shouldn't have to sit around waiting for someone who's not from our region to come in and tell us what will work best. Let's get the ball rolling and best locally. We have to be responsible. We can't leave our neighborhoods that are hit the hardest by violent crime out on the limb. Ultimately, we want this to help us, not hurt us. And with that, I'll end.
Thank you very much. That does exhaust our list of registered speakers. We will now move on to our Standing Committee Agenda. For the clerk, please take the role.
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Calhoun, Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Cow Smith.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle, Chair.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. We have four new papers, Bill 0677.
Bill 677, Resolution Authorizing the Issue One of a Warrant in favor of Ceci Portuguese and her attorneys in the amount of $105,000 relating to the full and final settlement of an eminent domain case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas by the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The bill is recommended. Bill 678.
Bill 678, Resolution Authorizing Eight Open-End Professional Services Agreements with multiple vendors to provide professional services for construction management and construction inspection on an on-call, on an on-call basis as required related to the assessment, design, construction, and maintenance of the city's infrastructure, buildings, and lands as needed by various departments of the city. Each agreement being at an amount not to exceed $2,500,000 annually for a two-year term with up to two additional one-year options and providing for funding of the cost thereof.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The bill is recommended. Bill 679.
Bill 679, Resolution Authorizing Nine Open-End Professional Services Agreements with multiple vendors to provide professional services for construction management and construction inspection on an on-call basis as required related to the assessment, design, construction, and maintenance of the city's infrastructure, buildings, and land as needed by the various departments of the city. Each agreement being at an amount not to exceed $750,000 annually for a two-year term of the two additional one-year options and providing for the funding of the cost thereof.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill is recommended. Bill 680.
Bill 680, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with the University of Pittsburgh's Small Business Development Center for Training of Consultants from Consultations and with Promotions of a Curriculum aimed at developing skills for small business owners who do not yet do business with the city as part of the city's required deliverables for our livable, living city's grant. The total cost shall not exceed $30,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Bill is recommended. That takes us to our invoices. We do have invoices for approval. Need a motion on the invoices?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the invoices are approved. That takes us to intra-departmental transfers. We need a motion for the transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, invoice, the transfers are approved. That'll take us to our Public Safety Services Committee. We have one deferred bill, Bill 6. Oh, we do? Oops, sorry. I missed that. Have a motion on the P-cards?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The P-cards are approved. Now we go to our Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Mr. O'Connor. We have one deferred bill, Bill 647.
Bill 647, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title I Administrative, Article 111, Organization, Chapter 116. Department of Public Safety to regulate the use of facial recognition and predictive policing technology.
Motion approved, discussion?
Second.
There's a, there was a technical amendment sent over by Public Safety that we worked with them from Monday till yesterday afternoon. We sent it to councilmembers. So I would just like to make a motion to amend.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion to amend say aye.
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 Opposed, the bill is amended. Any discussion?
On, on the bill, I just want to thank everybody. I talked to some councilmembers over the weekend. I want to thank the administration. I know I spoke to Chief of Staff Gilman last night. If there, there could be one more technical change, but we will figure that out by Tuesday. I want to thank Chief Schubert, who I spoke to last night, as well as everybody in Public Safety for working through those amendments over the last week or so as well as councilmembers. So I just want to thank everybody for that and I think the bill is ready to be moved. I have nothing further. Thanks.
Thank you. For the record, we are joined by President Smith. Any further discussion on the bill? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. I do want to talk about the bill.
Councilman Burgess?
I believe that Black Pittsburgh matters. My definition of Black Pittsburgh matters means that Black lives matter, which is the health and the safety of African-Americans. Black communities matter, which is rebuilding of Black communities. Black wealth matters, which means employment and wealth. And so I want to at least, let's, I want to talk about what we're doing today and what we're not doing today. I have no, the bill itself is mostly irrelevant. So I'm, I don't, I really don't care whether we pass it or not. In the WHEREAS clauses, it starts to talk about though racial bias, how facial recognition has bias and that facial recognition and predictive policing have racial bias and false arrest. If you're going to raise the racial issue, then I'm going to get involved and I'm going to read it because I want to know exactly explicitly how this is helping Black people. So I read the legislation and I want to make it very clear. This legislation does not help Black people. And so I don't want to hear later that it does. It does not do much of anything, actually. I am in favor of banning predictive policing. This bill does not ban predictive policing. I'm in favor of regulating facial recognition. This bill does not regulate facial recognition. It actually does very little. One of the things I'm also concerned about is I want to make sure though that facial recognition is used for felonies. In my district, I've had probably 150 deaths over the time that I've been a member of council. Many of those deaths that occur in African-American communities, there's no discussion, there's no witnesses, no one talks. And so that technology, I want to make sure it's used for homicide. But you say, well, the bill talks about, you know, predictive policing and facial recognition. What do you mean, Rev? It doesn't do anything. You go down to article of the end of the bill, which is the most important thing. If you go down to the end of the bill, Section 6, it says, "The contents of this ordinance shall not affect activities related to databases, programs, and technologies regulated, operated, maintained, and published by another government entity or otherwise available to the city through an intergovernmental drink purchasing agreement." What that means is we can use the state system right now. If we go and purchase a system with Wilkinsburg, Allegheny County, this bill will not prohibit it. And so right now, studies say over 50% of the population has been recorded in some shape, form, or fashion and subject, and could be subject to facial recognition. I just, I don't like bills that use African-American issues as a pretext and yet does nothing to help African-Americans. And I want to put you on warning. Every time you do this, I will do this. I will show why these pretend pieces of legislation do not help African-Americans. So you can do, and I'm just saying, this is a, this is something for the moment to say that we've done something when in actuality, it will not stop the current practices of the police. It probably won't, it does not ban predictive policing. It does not ban facial recognition. It does not, it does not regulate it. It simply says that if we purchase it sometime in the future, we're using it right now. And the odds are it's going to be purchased in collaboration, right? And right, the facial recognition software that was tested out was done by the district attorney. It's highly likely the way that we will get into this process will be with other municipalities. I would, I have no problem of, if, and I'm, I'll offer my services. I have written numerous pieces of public safety legislation since my beginning, since I've been a member of council. I've done this with deliberation. I've done this carefully with all interested parties because this is important. Because homicide for me is not a once-in-a-lifetime op. You know, one time I have a homicide in my district and then I'm upset. No, this happens monthly for me. And so I'm really careful that when I start talking about public safety, that I'm not giving false hopes or using the pain of African-Americans for some greater political or pandering moment. This bill creates no real change. Now, if you want to pass it, we can pass it. If you want to hold it and write a real bill, I'll offer my services to write a real bill. But I want to make it very clear what we're doing today. We are using the buzzwords, the buzzwords. You know, similar to, you know, we had a, a member of council was no longer with us, who was famous at doing that, who would make buzzwords. You know, no more photo ops. We bring African-Americans to council and have photo ops with them, but then our, our legislation empowers millions of dollars to the majority of the community and then we celebrate over a couple thousand given to African-Americans. I'm putting, I want to make it very clear. If you talk about African-American issues and you do not do something to improve the lives of Black people, I will call you out. This bill does not improve the health and safety of Black people. It does not ban predictive policing. It does not regulate facial recognition. And so I want to make it clear what we're actually doing. Not much of anything. So we can pass it. But I want you to know this accomplishes very little.
Thank you. Any further discussion from members? Council, President Smith?
Thank you. I just wanted to know, I apologize for logging on late. Was there any discussion about, about holding the bill or just in working together?
No.
Just make amendments? So if we pass it today, is, is there a plan to work together with the administration to make whatever necessary changes might be over the week, might be necessary?
There was, and just for clarity, I'm sorry. There was one amendment to the bill the Councilman O'Connor brought forward. We approved that amendment. He also stated that there may be another additional technical amendment that comes forward over the weekend for Tuesday, so.
And I'm just going to say. And I'm just going to say that I'll abstain today. I'll wait until the final bill so I know exactly what I'm voting on. But, you know, I just want to say we're in a time where people need us to come together and they need us to stop all this rhetoric. They need us to stop all this nonsense. They need us to see, show them real results. And, I mean, on, on every side of, of things that we're doing, we need to come together and we need to work together and show this community that they are, they are our priority, not ourselves. And I, I mean, I'm not going to say that this is one side or the other. I'm saying we all need to do this. And so I just want to make sure I say that publicly, that I want to make sure we're not exploiting people's pain for our own gain and that we're working together and showing the community that they are, we realize that they are, are, we answer to them. We, you know, they're our bosses and so that we're going to make sure that we do what's best for the entire community. And I've never, I want to be honest, I don't like any of the things when it comes time for public safety or public health. I have an issue with, um, politics being involved in any of that because we've not seen great results with that. And so, um, I really think that we need to know and understand, um, what it is and what the effects are of what we're doing. And so I'm going to, um, work on some, some other additional legislation that will make sure that whatever we do is not impacting the safety of the public in a negative way, um, in any way. And so I'm just going to say that part, but after that, I'm going to just abstain today.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Well, abstention, abstain.
Thank you. The bill is recommended. Um, that takes us to the Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Coghill. We have one supplemental paper, Bill seven oh seven.
Bill seven oh seven, resolution approving the recommendation made by the department, the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, that Brighton Woods Road be paved with asphalt in accordance with section four seventeen oh six of the Code of Ordinances.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Uh, we have one deferred paper, Bill six thirty-two.
Bill six thirty-two, resolution amending resolution seven forty-four, which authorized the directing, the city controller to create a special trust fund to be designated as a shade tree trust fund for the deposit of cash and contributions and authorize the use of the funds deposited there and by the Department of Public Works for any and all expenses associated with the operation and implementation of projects related to the planting and promotion of trees in the city to provide the director of the Office of Management and Budget with the authority to direct certain proceeds of the shade tree trust fund.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve. Okay.
Uh, discussion. I did see Councilman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so there's been a few emails back and forth since we held this and I'm not sure that we have a, a kind of, um, agreement or resolution between members of the Shade Tree Commission, um, some concerned citizens who were, you know, uh, active in the creation of the Shade Tree Trust Fund. And, uh, Chief Gilman responded to them, um, saying basically the same thing that we heard last week, the table, that, um, we voted last year to kind of allow this backdoor. I'm not sure at the time, um, whether we were, uh, fully cognizant or, or heard both sides of the issue. Um, and so the, there are members and supporters of the Shade Tree, um, Trust Fund and Commission who are asking that we at least have a public discussion, um, asking for a public hearing, asking to hear from forestry. Um, and reminding members, there was an email at about eight thirty this morning that you may or may not have seen. Um, reminding the council that there was robust public process in the creation of the trust fund and that it was a kind of, you know, important policy area to restore our tree canopy, that we've lost a great deal of tree canopy, um, that it's important to neighborhoods, to kind of heat islands, to greening neighborhoods, to our carbon footprint for, uh, flooding and, and remediation and that we have as a, as a city in austerity now for fifteen years, underfunded our own forestry department, not put significant capital funds into planting new trees and replacing trees. And just kind of reminding us of the kind of really big policy area that we, what the reason is that council created the Shade Tree, um, trust fund and revenue source. And given that this is really not a significant diversion of funds to mobility, um, Director Rex reminded us last week that the diversion was to mobility issues. Uh, but I, I believe that we could easily re-find another source, um, that would replace those funds. I mean, given the large capital budget for complete streets and mobility already, th- this isn't money that dummy really needs in their capital funds. Um, and then I think the third area of concern is that we've just kind of allowed um, a trust fund to be backdoored by just an administrative, uh, wish by, you know, the language here in front of us allows the director of budget, whoever that director of budget is and under whatever administration, to just kind of choose to move money somewhere else without any public attention. And I, I feel like that's just going too far. Um, so I would like to work through this. I mean, I emailed, um, Chief Gilman again, and the directors again this morning after I got the email from, um, a member of the public and, um, and, you know, Chief Gilman said he'd be willing to work through these issues. I'm not sure what that resolution will, I don't know what that will look like. Um, either that we have a public hearing or that we just kind of allow the funds to go into Shade Tree because again, we haven't, the, uh, Mayor Pedito executive order that we're supposed to plant. I, I kind of can't remember, you know, a hundred thousand trees or something and we'll need the funds for that. So, um, I, I don't know which way members, if members want to motion for a pu- a public hearing now or if it should be a post agenda or if we just kind of like keep, keep talking to the directors and Chief Gilman maybe for another week until we figure out what our path is. Uh, 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 but I'll also say that dummy really does want to move forward with the bus shelter project. So our option is to, to maybe, um, next week, allow the contract to go through and not have the money diversion. Um, so, and the chair of the committee is, is, um, Councilman Coghill, who's out of town this week and I didn't have a chance to, to, to get his feedback. So, um, he motioned to hold last time. So, uh, maybe we just hold one week. I don't want to hold this forever. I know that we, everyone supports the bus shelters moving forward as a contract. So if, if, I'll, I'll motion to hold if members, uh, feel that that's the, you know, path. Again, I, I got an email back from Chief Gilman this morning saying be happy to talk further. And that's the last communication I got.
Okay, so, so currently we have the motion to approve on the table. Do you want to change the motion?
Yeah, so motion to hold one week. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Councilman Smith?
Yeah, I just want to say that I, I see the email that it was something that city, I don't want to say this is a backdoor thing. This is something city council did. We voted for this last year and we're just moving, we're just doing what we said we were going to do. And so I, I think that if the council wants to hold for one week and work with the administration, I'm fine, but I'm not going to hold it beyond that. People are waiting for these bus shelters to be done. Um, but other than that, I, I'm okay with the one week hold if, if that's what everyone else wants to do.
Yeah, everybody wants the bus shelters. There's no doubt.
Yes.
So if, I, I would need a second on the motion to hold then.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor of a one week hold say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held one week. Um, that takes us to our Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus, um, Bill six seventy-five.
Bill six seventy-five, resolution providing for the filing of applications by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Human Services for grants in connection with the Joint Job Initiative Program Employment Advancement and Retention Network and providing for the authorization to enter into agreements with various agencies and to pay for expenditures for costs to support, implement, and administer the program costing not to exceed three million eight hundred twenty-eight thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Need a motion? Councilman Kraus is not here today.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is recommended. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. Uh, three new papers, Bill six eighty-two. Actually, Madam Clerk, they all have to be held for a public hearing. So can we just read all three?
Yes, sir. Bill six eighty-two, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title eleven of the Code of Ordinances, a certain site known as the Hainer Rose Rosenberg House located at four seventeen Lockhart Street in Dootstown, twenty-third Ward City, in the twenty-third ward of the city. Bill number six eighty-three, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title eleven of the Code of Ordinances, a certain site known as the Spring Hill School located at thirteen fifty-one Damon Street in Spring Hill, twenty-fourth Ward. Bill number six eighty-four, resolution approving a new institutional master plan under the Pittsburgh Code Title nine, Zone in Article two, Chapter nine oh five, Section nine oh five oh three V and Article seven, Chapter nine, twenty-two, Section nine, twenty-two, twelve G for Allegheny General Hospital. Institutional master plan dated August seventeenth, twenty twenty on property zone EMI, Educational Medical Institution, District Eight, Council District Seven.
Motion to hold for, uh, motion for all bills be held for cable cast public hearing, uh, discussion?
Is there a second on motion to hold? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Okay.
Oh, you, you want to discuss, Councilman?
I just want to make, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, say something. So I just want to make it known that the two designation, uh, for the historic structures, um, both, uh, property owners are in support and I just want to state that for the record.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the hold for the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All three bills will be held for a public hearing. That takes us to our Urban Recreation Committee chaired by, uh, Reverend Burgess. Uh, two supplemental papers, Bill seven oh two.
Bill seven oh two, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of City Planning to hereby name the previously unnamed trail in South Side Park, Healing Cold Trail.
Next vote, two please.
Okay, Bill seven oh three, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of City Planning to hereby name the previously unnamed multi-modular trail in Highland Park, the Cattail Trail.
I believe they have to be held for public hearing. So a motion to hold both for a public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bills will be held for a public hearing. That takes us to Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee chaired by Councilwoman Strausberger. We have one deferred paper, Bill six six one.
Bill six sixty-one, resolution amending resolution seven thirty-eight, which provided for a professional services agreement with NCR Corporation to provide citywide credit debit and e-check payment services for the collection of various programs and permitting fees for the city exercising the option to extend the term of the agreement for one year and no additional cost in updating the name of the vendor.
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Gross. We have one deferred paper, Bill six thirty-four.
Bill six thirty-four, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official soil facilities plan for proposed land development located at three sixteen South Highland Avenue.
Motion to hold four weeks.
Need a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held four weeks. We have two new papers, Bill six eighty-one.
Bill six eighty-one, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official soil facilities plan for North Nagley Residence at three twenty-seven North Nagley Avenue.
Motion to approve a discussion? Thank you. This is in Councilman Burgess's district. It's the, um, large synagogue, which I've forgotten the name of it, at the, at East Liberty Boulevard. I know there's a lot of interest, Councilman, if you want to say a little bit about the project. I even get emails of, about people wondering what's happening with it.
Um, the project, um, now I forget the name of it myself, but it's on Nagley Avenue. Um, they're going to build affordable housing on the school part of it and they're going to restore the synagogue as a community space. And, uh, it's a really unique architect, uh, architectural building. It's gorgeous. Um, but it's, it's really a very unique treasure. And so it's exciting that the developer can both, uh, build affordable housing yet keep, um, a very prized, significant, uh, religious structure and it can be continued to be used for, for future generations. So it's a, it's a, it's an exciting project.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Sorry, I haven't, so, um, all those in favors, any other further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to the final bill of the day, Bill six eighty-nine.
Bill six eighty-nine, resolution amending resolution number seven sixty-eight, authorizing a corporation agreement between the city and the U R A to divert seventy-five percent of the incremental parking taxes from the garage up to a maximum of ten million dollars to fund affordable housing at the proposed city's edge development in the uptown neighborhood of the city of Pittsburgh by adding language that would also allow for the funding of infrastructure, public space improvements, and a combined five hundred and eighth space parking structure on site as well as reducing the amount of proposed affordable housing units from seventy-seven to sixty-three.
Motion to approve a discussion?
Second.
Councilman Lavelle, I don't know if you wanted to speak to this project?
This is the city edge project. I think we've actually voted on this maybe three times previously. However, as the financing has come together for this project, the project has changed in scale. It's actually going to be a smaller amounts of housing than initially anticipated. Thus, we have to then change the language to reflect that as well as allow for some of the deferred money to be used for the infrastructure to actually build out this site.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Smith?
I just want to congratulate you because you've, you've really done a lot in your district and you, you can really see some of the things, um, really come to fruition now. And, and I just want to congratulate you and say what a great job you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is recommended. Um, that does exhaust our agenda. We do have a few meeting announcements. In addition to council's regular and standing committee meetings next Tuesday and Wednesday, both at ten AM. On Monday, September twenty-first, twenty-first, a briefing is scheduled for members on Act one eleven with sessions at ten AM and ten thirty AM. On Tuesday, September twenty-second at one PM, a cable cast post agenda is scheduled via the Zoom platform relative to community and occupational lead hazards. Please be advised that public comments are not taken at post agendas. And next Wednesday, September twenty-third at one thirty PM, a cable cast public hearing is scheduled via the Zoom platform on Bill six forty-five relative to an historic designation of the Shrine of the Blessed Mother. That exhausts our meeting announcements. Is there any, uh, announcements from members?
So I, yes, just briefly, um, I agree with, with Council President Smith that in this time of crisis, as we begin to think about reimagining our police, as we think about racial rec- racial reconciliation in the city of Pittsburgh, it's going to take all of us working together. But working together means mutual trust and respect. Um, it means being able to be honest and to be open, to not engage in, um, shameful activities or allow our staffs and our, our, um, um, to not participate in any way in things that are shameful and hurtful. Um, that's what city demands. And so what I do is I am willing to work with anybody and everybody, but I also believe the public is the right avenue for a clear, open exchange of ideas. Because I believe, and I have found in my life experience, um, that Because I believe, and I have found in my life experience, that people often engage in ugly activities and, in private, but are fearful, shameful to do it in public. And so, I do everything as much as I can in public, I won't work anybody, but in public, I will lay down my arguments, I will say what I believe, and let the public, and let the history judge whether or not I am correct. I am, am favor of, I believe that every life is precious, I believe that every citizen is precious, every neighborhood is precious. I don't advocate for African-Americans, or for African-American communities, because they're more important than other communities, no. I'm, and I'm going to steal this from Councilwoman, County Councilman Olivia Bennett, who took it from a training, I'm a fireman. If you went into a neighborhood and a house was on fire, you would not spray every water on every house in the neighborhood, that would make no sense. You would go and spray water on the house that is burning. My emphasis in African-Americans and African-American communities is because those are the, those are the houses that are on fire. It is our black population, as I've said over and over again, that is feeling the brunt of systematic racism and has endured it for many decades. This is not new. And in our newfound moment, where we acknowledge the tragedy and the plight of those communities, let's do that in a sincere way. There is no time, there is no time, and no time for political gamesmanship or symbolic things, so that we can put it on a mailer in our future political careers. I don't have a future political career, for me, this is my life. And I waited for my whole life to have this conversation about what's best for African-Americans, and I will have it here in public. And if by advocating for black people, for black leadership, for black communities, if that makes me less than in the eyes of other people, I understand that, that's not new for me, I've lived that for many, many years. But, it's for it, is why I'm a member of council. If we're going to have a conversation about African-American issues, I will get involved, and I'm telling you now how I'm going to judge it. I'm going to want to see results for those three things I've said. A, does it protect the lives of black people? B, does it rebuild traditional black communities? C, does it build wealth or employment for black people? We passed legislation saying that. If it does not, I will call it out of being insincere and hollow, and I will do it every single time, not in private, in public, because that, this is the people's table, and the people have a right to know what we are doing and for the reasons that we're doing it. And so, I don't, I don't mean to be, you know, I'm the, I'm the old, as Doug Shewell used to say, I'm the old man on council now, right? I'm a senior, one of its senior members. And so, that's going to be my perspective moving forward. Again, I wouldn't work with anybody, everybody, I don't think I've ever turned anybody down to today. But if we're going to come together, it has to be in an honest, trustworthy, sincere way, and I think we, I think the city demands that, and we'll see if we can rise to the occasion. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
My sermon for today.
Any further discussion from members? Seeing none, we need a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.